Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We'll begin with today's board workshop. Today's pledge of allegiance will be announced by Kennedy Kurtley from Horizon Heights, a school third grader.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we'll go down to number three, board honors. Daniel Escobar.
Good evening, President Gandara, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Espinoza. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. First, we will recognize Team SISD teachers who are being honored by the UTEP Athletic Department and Conference USA as the recipients of the Conference USA Extra Yard for Teachers Initiative. The teachers were nominated by UTEP student athletes from the El Paso area for inspiring them and contributing to their academic success. The teachers are being awarded with a $100 gift card from Michaels as an appreciation for their dedication to their students and to help decrease out-of-pocket expenses for classroom supplies. In addition, UTEP and Conference USA are providing 20 extra gift cards for us to reward to other outstanding teachers in the district. At this time, we would like to invite UTEP Athletic Director Bob Stola and the student athletes up to receive our teachers. If you'll please join Dr. Espinoza on the board. You may shift over just a little bit. Oh, there we go. So, congratulations to these outstanding teachers and recipients of the Conference USA Extra Yard for Teachers Initiative. They are from Americas High School, Carol Hardy. Also from Americas High School, John Espinoza. Another trailblazer from Americas, Michelle Luna. From Eastlake High School, Albert Martinez. From Montwood High School, Oscar McClure. Also from Montwood, Patricia Ariano. Another Ram from Montwood, Aora Herrera. From Socorro High School, Timothy McDonald. Also from Socorro, Barbara Wright. Another Bulldog from Socorro, Kenta Matsuda. And from Sunridge Middle School, Caterina Lopez. Students, teachers, if we'll have you all shift over to the center with our Board of Trustees, we'll line you up for a formal photo. And just a quick note that all of the pictures taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, will be posted on the district SmugMug account. There's a photo icon on the bottom right-hand corner of our website. Those pictures are available for a free high-resolution download. Should we move a couple up? Kristi, should we move a couple up back there? You probably want to get next to him. There you go. Yeah. Keep smiling, keep smiling, keep smiling. Congratulations once again. team for a great season after winning another 5A by-district championship. The Falcons had 11 first-team all-district players and five players make the All-Star team, who these players led them on the field. They had an overall record of seven wins, only four losses. Congratulations to these great student athletes. The championship Falcons are Emery Hardy, Jake Armijo, Jojo Gandara, Adrian Talavera, Dane Kurtley, Mike Ochoa, Montreal Williams, Ethan Briceno, Keith Rodriguez, Daniel Garcia, Ivan Avina, Adrian Donacio, Eric Pietro, Ezekiel Jones, Andres Carmona, Devin Pinero, Angel Castro, David Guian, Mike Rios, Jeremy Garcia, Jerry Martinez, Rafael Beltran, Rolando Beltran, Hugo Vigaroa, Gabe Treviso, Robert Antuna, Kevin Bumpus, Jeremy Carillo, Eddie Andrade, Luis Chavez, Nathaniel Regalado, Jacob Lopez, Sebastián Villarreal, Aaron Granados, Gabriel Garcia. Assistant coaches are Maurice Hamilton, Juan Ortiz, Bobby Acosta, Aldo Gonzalez, Roger Enriquez, defensive coordinator Ruben Rodríguez, and they're led by head coach Jimmy Calderon. Another loud round of applause for these championship Falcons. Gentlemen, if you all will please return to the front for a photo with our board and superintendent. Yep. Keep smiling, keep smiling, hold on. Are we good? All right, congratulations once again. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you. Oh, really? Really bothering you, huh?
Oh, really? I believe Mr. Espinoza is talking.
Oh, man. Is Steve Blanco coming? He's on the agenda.
Is he?
Yeah.
Me?
You're right, you're right, you're right. I was previously reading.
Me?
Okay, let's go down to item number four, board workshop, health plan comparison and proposed changes.
Good evening, President Gandara.
You surprised me on that one.
Board of trustees and Dr. Espinoza, I'm excited to be here. This is my first official presentation to the board. I'm here excited, but unfortunately not with a very exciting topic. As you can tell, we're going to be talking about health insurance and proposed changes for Plan Year 2017. So before I get to the actual presentation or the changes that we're going to be proposing, let me give you a little bit of background information in terms of who our population is and what is it that we are looking at when it comes to data. We have about 4,910 covered employees or 8,893 employees plus their dependents. Out of those members, 41% are over the age of 40, 40 and older. And why is this important? Because as you might already know, because I know some of you are not 40 yet, our bodies go through a change. We, instead of becoming the one in the playground, we become the person who's sitting on the bench watching the people in the playground. And that makes a change for us because that means that our lifestyles are changing. And it's important. Out of those number of people that we insure, 36.5% have a chronic condition. Medical and pharmacy plan trend is 4.9, which is significant. Pharmacy drug inflation right now is at 6.3%. And just to give you a better illustration of what this means to us is, an average cost for someone who has hypertension, that person or that individual will cost us or cost the plan $873, accounting for 3.5% again of the population that we insure. Someone with diabetes, it's also costing us $3,629, which accounts for 7.1%. Only 16% of the individuals with a chronic condition participate in a wellness activity. For the individuals, or for the 2,787 individuals that participate in a chronic coaching condition plan, it's costing us about $5,313 per plan, per member, per year, and per employee for 1,907. What does this mean? What does all this translate to? We're spending around $47 million in medical expenses and claims. What can we do to better educate and have that relationship between the employer and the employees be a little bit more in added equilibrium? So right now, what we know is, we're spending more money than what we're putting into the health fund. We need to encourage our employees to be better consumers, to know that we are self-funded, that the money is coming from the school district and it's coming from their pocket. We need to encourage a relationship between our employees and their primary care physicians. Right now, we have a rich plan where if I decide to go to a specialist without having to go through a primary care physician necessarily, I can do so. Create a, again, like I said, a spread between a primary care physician and a specialist. Encourage e-network utilization of our healthcare providers. Initiate a plan design, whether it's with increasing a premium rate, a deduction, through a deductible. Increase deductibles for out-of-network providers, which are basically those that are not necessarily part of the Cigna network. Increase deductibles for out-of-pocket maximums as well. Reduce out-of-network coinsures for the health insurance plan, which right now would cover for chronic conditions at 100% and for any other services, 70%. Initiate pharmacy changes. Right now, pretty much any prescription and every prescription available, it's covered through the plan. We're thinking of or suggesting to implement a value pharmacy drug list, which removes commonly allergy and ulcer coverage to over-the-counter. Remembering years past when Nexium became available to the public and every other healthcare provider made Nexium available to their patients, so Nexium was a hot item. Everyone wanted Nexium. As soon as the formula became available over-the-counter, we saw our members walk in and wanting to know why was it that their Nexium was not longer available through the health insurance? Well, it was mainly because there was a dual advantage to it. It became, the formula became available over-the-counter, it became a lot less expensive. And then, as we all know, as soon as new formulas come out, the new formula is what's being pushed out to the consumer. We're looking at implementing a step therapy program where we'll pretty much monitor utilization of those drugs. If someone is being prescribed a non-preferred or what's new in the market of pharmacy, then we could possibly look into having them try a generic, which will be cost-effective to the employee, will be cost-effective to the plan. In addition to this, we have talked about other initiatives that we can work through and implement in our school district. The wellness program, I believe this was fairly initiated this year, where we have wellness initiatives throughout the school district. We have biometric screenings, those are starting next month in the month of January. We've been talking about implementing and looking into having an employee clinic available as well. There is a wellness initiative through Cigna, known as Motivate Me, where, you know, again, through different coach plans, someone who has a chronic illness per se will be contacted by someone at Cigna and they can make recommendations in terms of the line of care that they might be needing. Telehealth Connect, which is a phone service for what's comparable to a primary care physician visit, rather than me having to take off time from work and go visit a healthcare provider because I have a sore throat, I could possibly do that over the phone once I have created a profile. We also are thinking of the 90-day RX supply at a retail pharmacy. Today, some of our employees or our members think that if I order by mail, Big Brother is watching and/or I may not get my prescription, so I don't order by mail, which in turn does not provide the savings to the plan and of course, the employee's not taking advantage of receiving a 90-day supply prescription and only paying copay for two months. With the 90-day RX, we could offer this through a retail pharmacy. So those are some of the levers that we could look at and that we're considering to look at as we go through our proposed changes. Initially, administration looked at implementing what you see as current benefit compared to year three. Through our committee, it was recommended to administration to do less of a drastic change and come up with a multi-phase plan, which is what you have in front of you on our next slide. I'm sorry, before I get there, I'm sorry, it's in the same slide. You see year one, which would start as of July 1st, 2017, and it will conclude on June 30th, 2018. Year two or phase two, to start on July 2018 and conclude on June 30th, 2019. And the last phase starts on July 1st, 2019 and concludes on June 30th, 2020. We're hoping that by implementing small changes, we'll be able to not hear or get pushback from our employees as we perhaps probably would see if we were to implement phase three or year three at once, but we will be able to have the opportunity to better educate them and remind them that this has to be a dual effort. This is a business relationship in terms of, if someone's giving more than the other, there's going to be a break in terms of the funding for what we're, we're basically spending more than what we're getting into our bucket. This slide towards the bottom tells you that if we were to implement those three phases, our goal is, by phase three, to be able to save around 9.5% of what we're spending right now. Again, it's through a method of implementing new initiatives through our wellness program, employee clinic, telehealth, being able to have a consultation over the phone, and so on and so forth. Now, again, during one of the committee meetings, we were asked to present and do a comparison in how we stand or how do we look when compared to other school districts in the area. And as you can see, even if we were to increase the premium by the proposed $20, we would still be under pretty much every and any other school district, again, in this service area. Just to give you an idea of what we would be looking at, the premier plan, which currently offers e-network benefits at 90, 10%, would go for coverage for employees will go from $60 a month to $80 a month. The base plan, which offers e-network benefits at 80, 20%, would go from $0 a month to $20 a month. The high deductible plan, which currently offers 100% of coverage for those chronic conditions, would go from $0 to $20. Down the line, down that table, you'll see that $20 increase. Again, this is just phase one of what we're proposing. The following slide gives you a better illustration of what each plan option, the premier, the base, and the high deductible option offer at this point. Changes such as the deductible, the out-of-pocket, and the copayments for primary care physician and specialist will have a change as well, but the change is minimal, is gradual, but there is a change to pretty much every tier that's offered through the benefit itself. I don't know if I'm going too fast or if there's any questions at this point. Now on to the numbers, and I don't know if Mr. Ressa would like to add anything at this point, but again, every area that we are looking at, whether it's at a deductible, out-of-network maximum, copayments, rates per level of coverage, have attached to them an actual percentage of savings. All gathered, sum up together, our goal is to be able to save within the next three plan years around 9.6% in terms of money that will translate to $4.5 million.
President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, Tony, members of the board, just want to emphasize a couple of things that Mr. Carmona is going to go over. As you can see, we want to go from, I guess, that first, the current benefits to year three. And so what you're really looking at is an increase, an increment, let's say with respect to the employee premium of about $90 over three years, okay? And it's important to keep in mind that we're trying to save .45 billion dollars in savings, but we're spending about 8% increases in medical, and we have about an 8% increase in medical claims. You're talking about $3.6 billion, that's what we're trending. We're going up $3.6 billion every year. We're projected to have $47 million in expenses in our healthcare plan. We're not going to generate more than 42. So as that trend goes in there, we need to be conscious of the fact that it is an impact to our employees. We understand that. But what's paramount to us is the fact that this, what I understand, there's only 58 school districts in Texas that have our own healthcare plan. We're one of them. And it's getting very expensive. And our plan is the best plan in the city, bar none. But it's also, in my opinion, unsustainable with respect to...
Are basically those that are not necessarily part of the Cigna network. Increased deductibles for out-of-pocket maximums as well. Reduced out-of-network coinsurees for the health insurance plan, which right now would cover for chronic conditions at a hundred percent. And for any other services, seventy percent. Initiated pharmacy changes. Right now, pretty much any prescription and every prescription available. It's covered through the plan. We're thinking of or suggesting to implement a value pharmacy drug list, which removes commonly allergy and ulcer coverage to over-the-counter. Remembering years past when Nexium became available to the public? And every other healthcare provider made Nexium available to their patients. So Nexium was a hot item. Everyone wanted Nexium. As soon as the formula became available over the counter, we saw our members walk in and wanting to know why was it that their Nexium was not longer available through the health insurance? Well, it was mainly because there was a dual advantage to it. It became, the formula became available over the counter. It became a lot less expensive. And then, as we all know, as soon as new formulas come out, the new formula is what's being pushed out to the consumer. Uh, we're looking at implementing a step therapy program where we'll pretty much monitor utilization of those drugs. If someone is being prescribed a non-preferred or what's new in the market of pharmacy, then we could possibly look into having them try a generic, which will be cost-effective to the employee, will be cost-effective to the plan. In addition to this, we have talked about other initiatives that we can work through and implement in our school district. The wellness program, I believe this was fairly initiated this year, where we have wellness initiatives throughout the school district. We have biometric screenings. Those are starting next month in the month of January. We've been talking about implementing and looking into uh, having an employee clinic available as well. There is a wellness initiative through Cigna known as Motivate Me, where, you know, again, through different coach plans, someone who has a chronic illness per se will be uh, contacted by someone at Cigna and they can make recommendations in terms of the line of care that they might be needing. Uh, Telehealth Connect, which is a phone service for what's comparable to a primary care physician visit. Rather than me having to take off time from work and go visit a healthcare provider because I ha- I have a sore throat, I could possibly do that over the phone, once I have created a profile. Uh, we also are thinking of the ninety-day RX supply at a retail pharmacy. Today, some of our employees or our members think that if I order by mail, Big Brother is watching and/or I may not get my prescription. So I don't order by mail, which in turn does not provide the savings to the plan. And of course, the employee is not taking advantage of receiving a ninety-day supply of prescription and only paying copay for two months. With a ninety-day RX, we could offer this through a, a retail pharmacy. So those are some of the levers that we could look at and that we're considering to look at as we go through our proposed changes. Initially, administration looked at implementing what you see as current benefit compared to year three. Through our committee, it was recommended to administration to do, uh, do less of a uh, a drastic change and come up with a mul- multi-phase plan, which is what you have in front of you on our next slide. I'm sorry, before I get there, I'm sorry, it's in the same slide. You see year one, which would start as of July first, twenty seventeen, and it will conclude on Jul- I'm sorry, June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Year two or phase two, to start on July twenty eighteen and conclude on June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. And the last phase started on July first, twenty nineteen and conclude on June thirtieth, twenty twenty. We're hoping that by implementing small changes, we'll be able to not hear or get pushback from our employees as we perhaps probably would see if we were to implement phase three or year three at once. But we will be able to have the opportunity to better educate them and remind them that this has to be a dual effort. This is a business relationship in terms of if someone's giving more than the other, there's gonna be a break in terms of the funding for what we're, we're basically spending more than what we're getting into our bucket. This slide towards the bottom tells you that if we were to implement those three phases, our goal is by phase three, to be able to save around nine point five percent of what we're spending right now. Again, it's through a method of implementing new initiatives through our wellness program, employee clinic, uh, telehealth, uh, being able to have a, a um, consultation over the phone and so on and so forth. Now, again, during one of the committee meetings, we were asked to present and do a comparison in how we stand or how do we look when compared to other school districts in the area. And as you can see, even if we were to increase the premium by the proposed twenty dollars, we would still be under pretty much every and any other school district, again, in this service area. Uh, just to give you an idea of what we would be looking at, the premier plan, which currently offers e-network benefits at ninety, ten percent, would go for coverage for employee only will go from sixty dollars a month to eighty dollars a month. The base plan, which offers e-network benefits at eighty, twenty percent, would go from zero a month to twenty dollars a month. The high deductible, deductible plan, which currently offers a hundred percent of coverage for those chronic conditions, would go from zero to twenty. Down the line, down that uh, table, you'll see that twenty dollar increase. Again, this is just phase one of what we're proposing. The following slide gives you a better illustration of what each plan option, the premier, the base, and the high deductible option offer at this point. Changes such as the deductible, the out-of-pocket, and the copayments for primary care physician and specialist will have a change as well. But the change is minimal, is gradual, but there is a change to pretty much every tier that's offered through the benefit itself. I don't know if I'm going too fast or if there's any questions at this point. Now on to the numbers, and I don't know if, if Mr. Ressa would like to add anything at this point, but again, every area that we are looking at, whether it's at a deductible, out-of-network maximum, copayments, uh, rates per level of coverage have a, attached to them an actual percentage of savings. All gathered, sum up together, our goal is to be able to save within the next three plan years around nine point six percent in terms of money that will translate to four point five million dollars.
President Gandara, Dr. Svenasatoni, uh, members of the board, uh, just want to emphasize a couple of things that Mr. Carmona is gonna go over. As you can see, we want to go from, I guess, that first, the current benefits to year three. And so what you're really looking at is an increase, an increment, let's say with respect to the uh, employee uh, premium of about ninety dollars over three years, okay? And it's important to keep in mind that we're trying to save point four five, four point five million dollars in savings. But we're spending about eight percent increases in medical, and we have about an eight percent increase in medical claims. You're talking about three point six billion dollars, that's what we're trending. We're going up three point six billion dollars every year. We're projected to have forty-seven million dollars in expenses in our healthcare plan. We're not gonna generate more than forty-two. So as that trend goes in there, we need to be conscious of the fact that it is an impact to our employees, we understand that. But what's paramount to us is the fact that this, what I understand, there's only fifty-eight school districts in Texas that have our own healthcare plan. We're one of them. And it's getting very expensive. And our plan is the best plan in the city, bar none. But it's also, in my opinion, unsustainable with respect to what we're putting in currently. So we have to make some changes that will certainly sustain the plan. So even if, even if we go for those three years, you're looking at an increase for a premium of an employee of about ninety dollars a month. It's about three hundred and sixty dollars over a three-year period. Now, there's some drawbacks to that. Well, let's, let's say, what are the benefits? The employees know what we're gonna do over three years. It lessens the burden on their income and their salaries. The detriment, in my opinion, is the fact that are we gonna have enough savings to stem this negative trend with respect to finances that we've had for the last three years, number one? Number two, we're gonna have pushback. And we're gonna have pushback every year for the next three years, in my opinion, because they're gonna be seeing changes. So because of this consideration of the fact the employees, we, we can give them that information and there's a benefit because it lessens the burden? I mean, bottom line is that we might have this plan and maybe by year three, because of the, the claims that we're incurring, we may not be able to uh, adjust it to what we had planned in that year three. It might have to be more significant with respect to premium increases or changes in the out-of-pocket. So those are some of the scenarios that we have to face. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to muddle, uh, muddle the, the presentation, but this is a, just a lot of numbers that you have to go through. But I, I'm just, I think, I want to commend certainly Mr. Carmona and Mr. uh, Gumboya and his staff for coming up with a presentation, hopefully that would kind of certainly show uh, as much as possible, the changes in our healthcare plan.
I know that uh, through predictive modeling, we can come up with numbers, percentages, and so on and so forth. We can also look at the numbers of the people that are gonna be impacted. And I like to think that, for the most part, when we hear back from our employees or the pushback is a bad thing is because they have not been informed and they have not been given enough time to better prepare. There's no doubt in my mind that we need to make a change. And that might be the best good news is not that your premiums are gonna go up. It's never good news. But for me, it's better to be able to say the change is minimal compared to what other school districts in the area have gone through. I remember uh, a few years back, unfortunately, our, our neighbors, this letter had to make a drastic change when it comes to, to their premium. They went from paying uh, around fifty dollars for the Cadillac plan up to two hundred and thirty, I believe. That's significant. If you were to tell me that my premium now is gonna go up two hundred and fifty percent, that would probably make me think and make me angry at the same time. But again, predictive, predictive modeling, numbers, percentages, it's all great information, but it really, it's not good information if nothing's done with it. I don't know if, if the members have any questions for me or anyone would like to...
Anybody have questions? Mr. Nakada.
Um, can we go all the way to that, to the beginning?
Sure.
Okay, on the fourth bullet point, Mr. Carmona, medical and pharmacy plan trend is four point nine percent. You mean the increase is four point nine percent?
Hold on, let me, I'm sorry, let me get to that slide. Yes, sir.
Okay, so for every single one of those, it's an increase, three point, thirteen point four percent increase in pharmacy, fifteen percent increase in outpatient?
Correct.
Okay, what about, do we measure inpatient as well? Um, and the reason I ask the question is because I know costs are going up, so it certainly wouldn't surprise me, but um, I work in healthcare. The industry to move patients to the outpatient side is, I mean, that's the norm. That's what everybody is doing. And so a fifteen percent outpatient trend wouldn't scare me one bit. But I think the missing data point there is, what's the inpatient side? Is it fifteen percent as well or um, you know, even higher for that matter? Increases in costs, do, do you know, Mr. Carmona, if they're attributed to, um, I know that there's certainly a portion, uh, you know, our, our healthcare costs are going up. What portion of it is attributed to uh, growth in our uh, employee base? I mean, because I know we've grown it and so um, we factored uh, that particular, you know, when we anticipate uh, employee growth, you know, there's growth for different reasons. Uh, most, uh, most recent one I remember is it was required by a grant. You know, we had to add the position. So um, how much of the increase is our own doing? Because we've added position versus increases in utilization. Again, the nature of that question is, increase in utilization, we can control. Um, we can try and control, we can try and address through education, et cetera, but increases in employment, you know, this is a little bit more permanent and we kind of do that to ourselves. Uh, so we have even more control uh, over that. So I wonder how much of the increase is in utilization? What are we doing, um, when you look at um, for the two thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven individuals that participated in chronic condition coaching with an estimated cost of nine nineteen, uh, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, that's about three hundred dollars. Um, you know, what, what type of chronic conditions do they have? And the wellness program, what kind of wellness program is it? I've never heard, you know, I mean, something simple? Like uh, a discounted gym membership? You know, I've never heard of us having a discounted gym membership. I've never uh, walked in and, and, and been told, you know, and into gyms themselves. A member, I haven't used it in the last month as much as I should, but, but I was using it. I guess in January, after the resolutions, that starts again, but you know...
It shows, bro.
Well, Mr. Gandara, let's see. But, you know, so I've never been offered a discount anywhere, you know, and, 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 and not that I'm looking for one, but as you're walking into Walmart and you see Planet Fitness there or EP Fitness, if they see you in a Socorro shirt and we offer a membership discount, as a salesperson, I'd say, hey, you know what? We offer a discount to Socorro employees. I mean, so we're trying to take advantage of opportunities like that and educate them as well so that they can, you know, they have an avenue, so, you know. Wellness is, is certainly one thing, but you know, the other piece is trying, trying to promote it to make sure that, that people are, are getting healthier. Even if they only, you know, take advantage of it in January, that's better than not at all. Um, are we doing things like that?
Yes, sir, if I may. Um, the first two questions in terms of inpatient, the cost and the uh, utilization. I don't have those numbers with me, but I can get those numbers for you. When it comes to the wellness, we do provide information during the new hire orientation. Uh, we do have a wellness coordinator, district-wide wellness coordinator that is promoting whatever activity we have going for the month. And she's making visits, uh, last month, I'm sorry, the month of October, we had a mammogram, a mammogram van visit our, our facilities and, and, you know, provide that service. So we do have uh, different activities going throughout the school district. And you're right, we can definitely do a better uh, job in terms of promoting our services, our wellness initiatives, especially Twitter. Now that I'm getting familiar with Twitter, 'cause I can tell you, when Mr. Gumboya said you need to learn to tweet, I thought he was joking.
Yes, again.
Serious, you need to have a Twitter account. And it took me about five, ten minutes to realize he's being serious. Again, coming from another school district, culture is different. Um, so you're right, and we do have a business partnership with Coach Gym, Planet Fitness, EP Fitness. Not a service agreement per se, but we do have and partner up with them to where, whether we have a uh, activity at a campus level or district-wide, they do cooperate and have, you know, promote their services. To us, or I'm sure to the rest of administration, having partnerships with the American Heart Association, EP Fitness, Planet Fitness, Diabetes Association of El Paso are very important because directly or indirectly can be more of a resource to us and promote their services and make them available to the employee.
Mr. Carmona, what um, how actively can we um, encourage these individuals? You know, of course, there's HIPAA protections for individuals and their uh, specific illnesses. So how actively can we um, identify, you know, the subset of population, for example, that um, has diabetes and, and market directly to them programs that, that would benefit them? Is that something that's possible or is it...
It is possible, uh, through the partnership that we have with Cigna. Once the, the individual or the members identified with a specific diagnosis, that will trigger a different uh, automated information that goes to them. You're absolutely right, we avoid uh, targeting or taking the approach from the employer's side because the last thing that we want from the employees for them are here to feel that they're being targeted. They're the reason why. But it's through the partnership that we have with Cigna that we uh, communicate specifically to those groups that need a specific type of information.
Yeah, okay. Um, how about uh, the next slide, please, sir?
Oh, sorry. I guess I meant go to the next slide.
We're gonna stare at each other again for about five minutes like uh, the, the Twitter conversation. Um, let's see, better consumers of healthcare, um. Step there, be, Mr. Carmona, I would suggest uh, maybe if we could conduct a survey, and I don't know if it's possible, but I don't think I've ever heard that the ninety-day pharmacy is a um, a concern with Big Brother. My concern, I mean, would, I think even, even greater than Big Brother. Or if I was afraid of Big Brother watching me, have you ever noticed that when you go to um, Walmart and you use your debit card and all of a sudden you sign into the Walmart website, they're advertising things that you've purchased? They're, and it's because your credit card now is associated with that. So I would be much more concerned with going to a pharmacy and making my purchase there that if Big Brother was watching me, because as soon as I make the pharmacy purchase, they know what I bought, they know that I bought it, and they know how often I'm buying it. So, you know, um, and it's Walmart. It's no longer, you know, Cigna, my insurance plan, who knows everything about me? Or even, you know, the independent pharmacy who would know a lot less about me, just, you know, my pharmaceutical purchases, the independent pharmacies. So I'm not too sure that that's a concern, I think, and, and, and um, luckily, I don't need any medication yet, although many people would argue with that, I'm sure. But um, I don't need medication, but you know, I do have people in my life who need medication. And the last thing is, yes, definitely. Um, the um, I think the most common barrier is, is timeliness. People forget. And so, you know, if, um, and I don't know if we have reminders, but I think at some point, if we ask them, you know, why don't you use the ninety-day? And it wouldn't surprise me if the most common one is because, well, it takes me, you know, five to seven days to get the medication and if I want it overnighted, you know, it doubles the price. Or, you know, when you're paying a five-dollar copay, it, it even more, you know, 'cause overnight is gonna be twenty-five, thirty, fifty dollars. And so I am inclined to say that that is more um, of, of the hesitation or maybe the lack of use of the ninety-day program, more than people, you know, being afraid um, of, of who's watching them. So maybe some creativity, if possible, there on the ninety-day programs. I don't know if that's even possible, but you know, I think that would drive more. We can go on to the next slide as well.
And can I add something to that point? Um, and when it comes to my comment, it's more so in terms of the conversations, short conversations that I have had with employees, when asking them, have you heard about the ninety-day supply? You know, we get into uh, the details and the feedback most of the time is, why do you want to know? And you're absolutely right, it depends on how creative we get. So as soon as they hear there's a savings, you can get this mailed to you and you can pay two months' worth of med, yes, two months' worth of copay, but get three months' worth of medication, then their thought changes. But it's not until we get that in their ear that we'll make that, you know, that perception to where it's there actually a benefit. It's not that I'm trying to find out what type of medications you're taking and how frequent are you taking it. But you're, you're absolutely correct.
And I mean, for those people, you know, Cignas are TPA, so I guess we, we know anyways, no matter where they buy it. So, uh, the next slide, Mr. Carmona, please. Um, how many of our employees, I'd be interested in knowing how many of our employees are in the base versus the premier and the high deductible? The reason for my question is because I suspect, you know, the base is um, the base is free right now uh, to our employees. And it concerns me once again, you know, that our lowest-paid employees make, you know, let's just assume it's minimum wage, seven twenty-five. And if we increase the deductible um, to a thousand dollars in year three and then we add on top of that twenty dollars a month, we're cutting their salary by al- almost five percent.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, if, I mean, I, having no information whatsoever, having not anything, not even thought about the other impacts, but, and whether it's fair or not, but I would, you know, be more supportive of a plan that leaves the base, either you increase the, 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 um, the monthly um, payment, um, the rate, or increase deductible, but not both, you know, because um, I mean, I think if we, you know, it's just, it, it goes back to the Sletta example, you know, where, hey, great news, we're gonna give you guys a big raise. Oh, and by the way, we're gonna, you know, increase your premiums by the same dollar amount. So, you know, in the end, it's, it's even. So I would, I would ask us to explore those, even if it means that, you know, we, we have to increase to offset somewhere, you know, in the premier plan, it's gotta be offset somewhere, totally understand that. But the folks who prefer the, or pursue the premier or the high deductible are generally those, well, not the high deductible, 'cause that's also zero. Um, but the folks that pursue the premier plan are generally the ones that can pay for it, which is not our minimum wage employees and certainly not um, those who are, you know, sticking with the base. They stick with the base because that's all they can afford, because it's free. So I would ask us to consider the impact overall and see how many, you know, employees are uh, in that plan and how many um, are close to that salary range for that dollar amount. Um, the next slide, sir? Um, how do we compare? I, I, I see the, the comparison here between other school districts and certainly that's the job market we participate in. Um, I think if we could, i- if possible, and I don't, I have no idea whether we can or not, but I think maybe we should look at um, other employers as well. You know, if we, and, and um, as far as, and, and maybe Cigna could help us with that. Maybe they can't because it's, you know, proprietary information. You know, as far as benefits go, et cetera, because, you know, I, I certainly understand that we're competing against the other school districts and we want to give a better overall compensation package, you know, compared to that. But our plan is better than the other school districts. So, you know, we set the bar and we set it high. What do other employers in the area look like? Is our plan too generous or is it in line with everybody else, you know? Certainly, we don't want folks, although, you know, I certainly understand it is an altruistic uh, vocation because, you know, you come in because you want to make a difference. You don't want to make millions of dollars, although it would be nice, right? But um, you know, how are we doing compared to other employers as well? Uh, we want to attract, you know, not just good educators, but we've expanded so much that we want, you know, good tradespeople who want to educate, good nurses who want to educate, good, you know, I mean, as far as education goes, it, it, it runs the spectrum now, right? And so we have to compete against those as well. I think, you know, we wanna, we wanna be sure that we're competitive in those arenas as well. Um, and if we can't, we just can't, you know, but um...
I'm sorry, Mr. Nakada, I interrupted you, just with clarification. So you, you would like to see information regarding other public employers or both, public and private?
I think both, if possible. You know, and I think you've already answered the question, Mr. Carmona, by saying that where um, our benefit package is better than any government entity in the, in, in the, in, in the city or in the county. I don't remember your exact words. Um, I think if memory serves me well, when I was Thomason, at Thomason, back when it was called Thomason, I can confirm that, you know, I don't think, and, and, you know, I was working in healthcare, so I agree with that. But, you know, I think it, it just lets us know where we stand.
Absolutely.
Um, let's see, the next slide, please, sir? Uh, yeah, I don't think there's anything here, the next one? Yeah, and then um, I know what we're trying to generate um, is, is savings, but the word savings worries me and using the word savings. And so just, just a, a recommendation, you know, when Mr. Einten comes up and he talks to, to us about savings, it's money that we anticipated to spend, you know, and now we didn't spend it, so, you know, we can allocate it somewhere else. And while I think in this instance, you know, I mean, the same is true. If we don't spend it here, we, it, it allows us to contribute more money to our mission, which is educating students, right? But, but I just want to be careful, you know, four-point billion, four-point-five million dollars in savings doesn't mean we have four-point-five million dollars to spend somewhere else. It means our costs are going up. You know, and we need to rein them in, we need to control them. So um, maybe four-point-five percent in annual cost reductions to make sure that when we're communicating, you know, and I don't know if it's annual. It may be over the three-year term or, or maybe it is, you know, annually. But, you know, I, I want to send the correct message. I want people to understand that we need to reduce our annual costs or we need to um, um, rein them in, or we need to figure out how we fund them. And so, you know, I want to be, I want to be... And so, you know, I wanna be, I want us to be very careful with the terminology so that people understand, we're not looking to save money, we're looking to control costs because, you know, unfortunately, healthcare costs increase year over year over year over year. They're not going down, and I don't anticipate they will go down. And so if we don't spend what we have, if we don't learn to spend wisely, then, you know, it's unsustainable, right? We're, we'll have to make drastic changes. So I just wanna be clear that, you know, it's a reduction in what we're gonna spend and not necessarily savings. And the next, is that the last one?
Yes, sir, that was the last one.
Okay.
Thank you for that last point.
I have a question on the questions.
Any more questions?
Yes.
Well, maybe first of all, Mr. Ressa, can you discuss the impact this year that you're projecting? Because we may have to do something this year.
Yes, sir, and I was gonna bring that up at the end of this discussion, and that is, we're gonna trend, we're gonna look at our financial activity and our healthcare fund closely as we go through the year. Now, let's assume we do end up with $47 million in expenditures, and we maybe generate about, let's say, $42 million in revenues. You're looking at a $5 million deficit. We'll end up probably with a $2.5 million deficit at the end of the year. Now, some school districts, what they do is, at the end of the year, they just present in their financials a $2.5 million deficit ending fund balance, and they raise their contribution rate. What I'm proposing is that we have a very healthy fund balance, that we trend it, and then maybe in April or May, I bring to the board a possible transfer of our general, of our fund balance and assign that into the healthcare fund so that we can surely continue to sustain and surely have a positive fund balance at the end of the year. And we do that because we have a very healthy fund balance. Other districts don't, and so it just ends up in the red. I know my predecessor's school district, I looked at their financials for this year, they ended up with a $720,000 deficit, which would translate to maybe about $4 million deficit for us. I slid out, I'm looking at those two school districts that have their own healthcare plan, they ended up with a $1.3 million deficit, but they still had a, they still have about $700,000 in fund balance. So that's something that I wanna just inform the board, that this is something we're gonna be looking at, and we'll probably bring to you sometime in April or May, perhaps maybe earlier, through the finance committee and facilities, and HR committee, we can kind of provide some updates and what we're gonna look at.
And so this will allow us to finish the year within budget as you and your staff and certainly the Mr. Campoya staff and Mr. Carmona help us with how we can tweak the plan throughout.
That's correct.
For this year.
That's correct, sir.
So, first of all, the plan that was proposed today, I know we discussed quite a few elements there within the HR committee. I'm just one person, but I like your proposal and your plan. It trends over a three-year period of time. It doesn't surprise our employees. We've often said we're not gonna do the ISleta thing or other places. When you put up that slide, comparison, our district to other districts, we're way ahead. And so I think if we can inform our employees that they're gonna have to start contributing a little bit more, and I share the same concern Mr. Nahida has, that those same bus drivers and custodians are working in those other districts, paying phenomenal amounts of costs on their insurance to insure their families. So I think we're trying to be as prudent with that as possible. So my question is, a couple of things you mentioned certainly brought up a little bit of concerns. Tell me a little bit about out-of-network costs. And by the way, what hospitals are network? One of my goals has been throughout that we would be able to provide healthcare to our employees and their families as needed. Is things like MD Anderson, you know, Cook Hospital in San Antonio, Children's Hospital, is Mayo Clinic, our American, you know, the Cancer Treatment Centers of America, are those within network? And if our employees need to be referred to those facilities, are these, are there gonna be changes in the coverage, is what I'm getting at?
When it comes to, no, if, since we're keeping the same third-party administrator, we keep utilizing the same network. The network itself doesn't change. What changes is just the level of coverage.
So with that said, you know, I think that's important. We have one other, if you compare this plan to some federal plans, we're way ahead. You know, it's a great plan. I really just think if we can give our employees sufficient warning that we're all in the same boat together, and that I agree with the verbiage Mr. Nahida's saying, rather than a savings, you know, bring down cost, recoup cost, adjust cost, whatever it is, and then give our employees warning, not everybody will be happy. But I think if they, we continue to show that slide comparing us to the other districts, I think people will understand. And I'd rather take a $1 a month pay cut and keep what I have, than get a $10 raise and take a $100 a month pay cut, you know what I mean? And that's what some of the other districts have done. Based on our discussion, and I know we had a link to one, I like what you've been able to propose here so far, and so that hopefully we can provide good benefits to our employees.
And I don't, I'm sorry, interrupted you. I don't know if we have mentioned this, but our goal is to have, if not all of the phases, phase one, reviewed, proposed, approved, and so on, because our annual enrollment period will take place in the month of April. So we would like to have enough time to be able to go out there, visit our campuses, and let them know of any possible changes, if any.
Good evening. So exactly what Mr. Carmona is proposing is the plan. To implement this by July 2017, we need to start working possibly in January, if you all approve. So at this point, we're gonna probably ask of you all, do we go forward with proposal one, which is phase one for January board meeting? If the board feels that that's the right way of approaching it? And then we'll continue working on phase two for next school year, and we'll probably end up tweaking it as Mr. Nahida was suggesting, especially when we get to phase three. So we'll be proposing each phase individually as we come to that date. Or does the board want another workshop and come back with some additional information that was requested by Mr. Nahida?
Well, the only problem is that the slides are, have lots of numbers. I'd like to look at them one more time. You know, when we looked at them in HR, you know, I was using a percentage model. Our insurance advisor suggested that probably wasn't a wise way to think about that. So I went back and relooked at that again. There's a lot of numbers here I'd like to look at. I think for the most part it'll work well. One of the things, I understand you didn't propose that the district put in more on their part, and we're at the top of the list here. I don't think it's sustainable for us to increase our contribution. There, backup, or right there, that's fine. One, no, back one up, please? No, that one. You know, when you look across all the districts, 550 is way ahead, and to add more, at some point, our budget won't sustain that. And especially when the other things are not the same. And, you know, just as a comparison, it's Socorro, the base plan, currently an employee pays zero, Clint is 304, El Paso is 179, and ISleta is 211 today, just for the employee. And I really think that by being wise and educating our employees, tell them, we always, it would always be zero, but the reality is that the health market and insurance isn't gonna be that way. And so I like to look at these numbers. If you needed this approved so that you can start taking measures in January, then I would recommend a special board meeting so that we can approve if we're gonna move with that plan. And I'd like you all to give an opportunity to review some of the recommendations here and see if actually they work financially. You know, we can see, like I did, the numbers and say, I don't like that percentage, I don't like that number. But I'd like to give your staff an opportunity to do some math and truly see if that works or not. But if you wanted to move in January, then I would recommend to Mr. Gandara and the board that maybe we need to do just a quick special board meeting for discussion and approval of the plan, prior to, if it has to be done before the January meeting.
And that is up for discussion. We can still go, if we go February for approval to the board, we're kinda cutting it short because our open enrollment period is April. So we have to work with Cigna to make sure that we set up the plan for July and be ready for the open enrollment in April.
No, I would recommend bringing something for approval in January. If that's early enough, because we can't approve anything today anyway.
That is, that is the ideal.
I'm good with that.
But, but if I'm understanding, you want me to, you want us to do another board workshop?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Well, I was wondering, because I think there's some consideration that was given by, some questions that were brought by Mr. Nahida. Just a recommendation, I would hope that if you would burden us or allow us to have one more workshop so we could present this.
Yeah, we'll burden you, no problem.
I know, I'm just thinking that personally, I would hope that we'd have one more workshop to kinda look at some of the information, bring it. And then in early January, or that second week in January, and then in the regular board meeting in January, we bring the proposed changes.
And I'm okay with that, too. If it makes the administration more comfortable, I don't care.
So, and just wanna, go ahead.
And Mr. Nahida asked, how many members do we have, like, on the premier plan, on the base plan? On premier plan, we have 5,138 members, that is as of September. On the basic, we have 3,745, and on the high deductible, we have 262. So if you look at the numbers, the base plan is the lower number. So the difference, if we don't add a greater amount on the base plan, it's not gonna be significant.
Mr. Campoya, on, is this, is that total members, or is it employees?
No, that includes employee and dependents.
So I think that there's, is this number gonna, this is the number for employees, right?
Mr. Campoya, and then the reason that I suggested, I'm sorry, Mr. Gandara. The reason I suggested that we look at other employees and other business, well, government, but it leads me back, Mr. Carmona said that as far as government goes, we're already the best, is because I think at some point we can make the deliberate decision, are we either greater benefit or greater cost, more manageable cost? Are we good in benefit, or are we good in cost? Because, you know, as far as our employees go, our, you know, many offer the spouse, to cover the spouses. And I think, you know, if cost is what you're after, then the decision can be made there. If benefits is what you're after, then the decision can be made there. But I don't think that we at least deliberately wanna be the least in cost and the greatest in benefits, because then we're, you know, it's unmanageable cost both ways. But, I mean, if we're, if we make the deliberate decision to be the best at least in one of those, then our employees then can make the, you know, the decision, do we want the richer benefits, which is gonna cost us a little more? Or do we want the cheapest monthly premium, which means, you know, the benefit package isn't gonna be as good, but hey, cost is what's important to us. So, you know, we choose that. So maybe there's a balance that we can strike there. I don't know that whether we can do that, you know, by January or not, but just something for us to think about. And I certainly agree with Mr. Eintin. I like that we're doing it over three years, and the fact that you all took the time to come up with that proposal over three years instead of just, you know, waiting longer? Or, you know, just saying, hey, well, you know, this is our reality, we have to deal with it, everybody, you know, absorb it once. I certainly appreciate and understand the amount of effort that went into that. And, you know, the fact that you all took the time to approach it that way is appreciated as well.
Thank you. So if you all are okay, we would probably prefer to come back with another board workshop to just bring you the information on those private employers or, as you were talking, I was thinking maybe like the credit unions, you know, the bigger employers, possibly some hospitals, just so that you can see the difference as to what they offer.
Does anyone disagree? I mean, does that make sense to you guys? Do you, or am I, you know, go back to the comment that I'm not on medication, but I should be?
All in favor, he's not on medication, should be? We can look at some of those things, that's fine.
So I'll work with Claudia on your calendars and maybe a week before the January board meeting, have a final workshop with those additional questions answered. And then at that point, we'll bring it to the board, to the board meeting in January. Now, when we bring it to the board meeting in January, our goal is to just look at phase one. We don't wanna confuse the public unless you all feel that we should.
I think we should do all the phases so they know where we're heading.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So just wanna make sure we're clear on something here. So, I'm sorry, I'm going to the, I wanted to go to the last slide. So this is four point, what is it, $4.5 million in reductions in costs. So when you're looking over three years, you're talking maybe one and a half for $1.3 million in reduced costs.
So this is over the three-year term, correct? Not yearly?
It's not yearly, over the three-year term. And then when we're looking at an increase of $20 per month per employee, you're talking about another $1.2 million in additional revenue to the plan. So this is a cost, the premiums is a revenue to the school district, okay? And the next month, it's, next year it's $30 extra, so it's another 360. I just wanna make sure that we kind of explain that.
Okay. Any more questions?
No, sir.
Well, it's 6:38, this board workshop is now over.